Good evening. I'd like to call this July 7th, City Council meeting order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, pledge of allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Tonight, providing the prayer for our meeting tonight is Pastor Ken Langley from Christ Community Church. Pastor Langley, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm going to slip out as soon as I'm done praying. I am interested in the council's worthy work, but I have two grandchildren visiting from California. And if any of you are grandparents, you don't need any more explanation.
Understood.
Let's pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, the work that has been entrusted to the men and women in this room is worthy work, and so we pray for you to help them to do it well, with the right motives, for the right reasons, with results that will serve our city well and put a smile on your face. We're living in some unusual tense times, and so I pray for an extra measure of patience, wisdom, humility, and every other virtue that these civic leaders need in order to together lead our community. So grant that tonight in their deliberations and then in the work that they do when the meeting is over. What a privilege it is for us to experience government by the people, of the people, for the people. This weekend, we've been reminded what a blessing it is to be Americans. And so we ask, Father, that you would bless these United States, that you bless the servicemen and the first responders who labor, sometimes at great cost to themselves, to protect our freedoms, and would you bless the city of Zion, we ask, in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Langley, and thank you for the prayer of patience for us all. I think we've all noticed that during this time, given that we've all been locked in for probably the last three or four months, that probably patience is running thin on everybody's account and hasn't been great all the time, but thank you for that prayer. Appreciate it. Sure, your grandchildren. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes?
Yes, I have an agenda change to add. We need to add pending litigation to the closed session.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda change, adding pending litigation to the closed session? Second.
That's a motion. So, all right, that's a second.
Second. Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, public hearing appropriation ordinance. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Administrator Nabel, give us some good news.
This is all numbers. So the appropriation ordinance, we're required every year to adopt within 90 days of the start of fiscal year, so by the end of this month, basically. This is our legal, the city's legal authority to spend. So we adopt a budget that we use annually. That's our guideline for how we're acting in our current funds. But we also have a legal authority that we have to adopt, and that's the appropriation ordinance. Typically, it's inflated over our budgets. Our budgets are much more conservative than the appropriation ordinance. Primarily, that's for unseen things. You know, we wouldn't want a tornado or natural disaster or something to come through and say, "Well, we'd love to be able to help," but we don't have, it's not in our budget when there's FEMA grants or things that might come as a result. Other times, there's just things, operational things that happen where you end up going over budget, but we don't want to say, "Well, we can't provide the services we have to because we went $10 over on office supplies." So the appropriation ordinance basically covers that. Like I said, our budget is much more conservative than this, and that's what we use internally, but we do have to adopt a number. So all of these are built off the budget that we do approve. The total appropriation ordinance for all funds for the city of Zion is $43,337,648. That's for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021. We do have an item to adopt the ordinance as I have 8A later on in the agenda, but this is just a public hearing. Should there be any discussion on these amounts. This was available for review in the clerk's office as well prior to the meeting. There's questions from council for public. I'd be happy to address them. Otherwise...
Are there any questions from council, commissioners, or public on appropriations hearing?
I believe Mr. Bremner has a question.
Sure, would you repeat the public hearing pledge?
Sure. The total appropriation ordinance, again, this is for all funds of the city, is $43,337,648. Four, three, 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 seven, six, forty.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
How big is the gap between the 43 and the conservative number?
It's about four and a half million. We put, you know, 500,000 or a million in different areas, primarily public service, fire and rescue. We also have our amount of public property if we have, you know, fire damage or something at a city facility. So basically, the areas where there could be potential exposure for disaster or disaster assistance, we inflate that amount, but everything else is what the budget numbers are.
Additional questions or comments? All right. Make a motion to close the public meeting? Is the motion to close?
So moved.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number six is citizens' comments. There aren't any takers for citizens' comments, so we're going to move on to the next item, number seven, is the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on June 16th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on June 16th, 2020 at 8:10 p.m.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 135228 through 135353 drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total $649,402.21.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
A second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 8A, making appropriations for the city of Zion fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020 and ending April 30th, 2021 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As I mentioned in the public hearing, I would make a recommendation for the approval of the fiscal year 21 appropriation ordinance in the amount of $43,337,648.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the appropriations for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2021.
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, discussion authorization approval. Item 9A, consider approving other city funds for budget for fiscal year May 1st, 2020 through April 3rd, 2021 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. So the city financially has a bunch of different funds. Our general fund is our biggest one. That's where most of our operations come from, police, fire, public works, administrative services, all the fuel, vehicle maintenance, all that stuff comes out of the general fund. We are, from accounting standpoint, required to maintain separate tracking for different funds based on revenue sources or state law. So what I'm going to do is go through, a lot of these are restricted funds. There are ins and outs of funds, but I'll just go through and kind of explain what each one is for. I'll just kind of go page by page, and feel free to interject at any time if you have any questions. You have kind of the differences here, but I'll hit some of the big differences as I go through. The first one is the E911 fund. That is the tracking, it used to be when we had our own dispatch, we got an E911 surcharge tax for services, but since we consolidated with Gurnee Village of Gurnee, that's now under JetSpeed, Joint Emergency Transportation Safety Board. And what they do is, we have representation there, but they adopt a budget annually for Gurnee cost dispatch, Zion cost of dispatch, as it relates to equipment, things like that. So this is just an in and out. Our share of the tax that Gurnee collects, and then the, which is that first line of JetSpeed reimbursement, and then all the related expenses that go with it. The biggest thing this year, and we've already had this at other council meetings, is their share of the Starcom radio purchase over a three-year period. They're covering 82%, something around that, that amount of the total purchase. So we were financed the purchase over three years. They're reimbursing us for 80% of that payment. That's the biggest reason for the difference there. Zion Newport Fire Station Fund, years and years ago, when we annexed property out that was in Newport Fire Township, or Fire Protection District, we had an intergovernmental agreement with them that the taxes that Newport was collecting on that property that Zion is now collecting, we would continue to pay them that amount because they're basically responding to that area, their fire district. So this is just a money in and what goes out to them. Now, the intent of that initially was potentially accumulating funds in there to build an additional station, staff it, things of that nature. We realized that that's never realistically going to happen under financial circumstances. The cost doesn't justify the need, so we entered into an amendment to that agreement with them where every year what's collected, they get half, we get half. Because we're not going to build that, so we both kind of split the difference. So you'll see, we budgeted 57,000 coming in. Half of that, 28,500 goes to Newport, 28,500 goes to the general fund to help supplement our operations. So that's just an in and an out on there as well. The next two funds, the emergency service rescue fund and the fire protection fund, are just parts of our tax levy. We levy an amount every year for those services, and we transfer those funds over to the general fund to offset some of the costs of operation for fire and rescue. So those are net in and out as well. Fire protection fund, just so you know, that's, there's two lines. There's the property tax coming in of 756,000. 699,000 is what goes to the general fund. The other 57,000 is what the fire tax we collect that goes to the Newport Fire Station, I just talked about. The next one goes over to page two, is the street bridge fund. Again, that's a separate special revenue tax levy that we adopt. So we give about $218,000 of tax revenue. We also get some grant revenue for a sidewalk program. And then what we do is we have annual projects that we put in there. Engineering for this, or construction observation for the road program, which we'll be talking about later. Some additional patching. We're trying to expand our patching program this year. $200,000 out of more fuel tax. $40,000 street bridge. We used to only do 150,000 of patching. We're up to 240,000 due to some additional more fuel tax funds available. So we're trying to get more bent for a buck out there, more coverage. And then, like I said, the CDVG sidewalk program that we do annually. So revenue in, revenue out, we come up with about $27,000 net income for the year in that fund. We try to hold that just based on actual results that might come in from bids, project costs, over/under, or if we have an opportunity to do something else with that $27,000, we can. The next two funds, IMRF and FICA, that's our Social Security and Medicare. Our IMRF is the public pension funds. FICA fund is Social Security and Medicare. Again, we levy tax, property taxes for those. We're required to keep track of that as a separate fund, so what comes in goes out. We, the IMRF fund, when we adopted the levy back in December, we were able, we had a pretty good surplus in each of those funds. So what we did is we reduced the amount of levy in those funds to free up funds for the general tax levy. And even though our expenses in both of those funds are shown here exceeding what we're bringing in, we're basically using up that fund balance so that we don't accumulate a large fund balance. You could actually have tax injections if you accumulate too big of a balance in those funds under law. So we're utilizing those up. The next four or five funds are actually our TIF funds. So TIF District 6, which is our shared 173 district, we're getting about 280,000 of property tax from there. And that's just earmarked for potential development incentives, bring business into that area. We already have one with Little Caesars in place that we adopted a year and a half ago. And then I just earmarked $100,000 based on what may come along. There might not be anything that comes along this year as an opportunity, or by the time you go through it, it might be next year, but that'll just accumulate funds and be utilized. TIF 5, on page three, is Trump Parks TIF. We're getting about 261,000. I didn't earmark anything there. The plan of that is to accumulate funds for either property acquisition or a large project down the road. So we just started accumulating funds into there. I anticipate we get about 480,000 at the end of this fiscal year in that economy. TIF 3, which is the South Shared Rome TIF, again, that's a very mature TIF. We're in our past, our last, like, three years of that TIF district. We get about 750,000 a year on that. And we're anticipating a couple of developments, which we'll be talking about soon, as well as some incentive payments that we already have out there for the storage space that was developed. And I think that might be the only active incentive agreement that's currently in place. TIF 4 Fund is a residential TIF. That's Cran Meadows. Basically, for redeveloping and renovating that entire area out there, we just made that area of order. I think their total TIF incentive is $1.2 million, but they only get it if it generates revenue. So we anticipate about $76,000 this year. That's just an in and an out until they get to that amount. We're only at about 300, 200, 300,000 so far on that, but that's just a watch there. Page four, we go into Lake Mount Cemetery. That's just some funds that we got when the city took over, decided to take over, or was asked to take over maintenance of Lake Mount Cemetery. There was a small, it was about $50,000 in a checking account for maintenance. They turned that over to the city, and we just annually have mowing costs, supply costs, utilities for that. So we just kind of chip away at that fund every year once it's gone. It's just our responsibility to maintain. But it's not a major annual cost. The biggest fund we have on here today is the water and sewer fund. So what you see there is the first full year, we implemented the water rate increase for $1.60 per thousand. We tied that to having to be, having to be for infrastructure projects. So what you see is on the water sales line, $3.2 million, which is just the water sales. There's a line added, though, for infrastructure service charge about midway down the page, $743,000. So that's what we anticipate that will be this year. We had, our actuals for last year were about 288,000. So we're at about $1 million of infrastructure fund accumulation. And if you go to the very end of this, which is at the top of page six, you'll see we budgeted a $1 million actually water project this year, which is the first time in a long time we've been able to do that scale of project. So either that's going to be, we have some engineering going on that for some, a couple blocks, an alleyway project that's desperately needed, or if we can get the EPA funding for the low-interest forgivable loan in place, we'll do that and put that towards that project. Either way, we're going to utilize this for some much-needed water projects this year and going forward. But I wanted to at least show that as a separate line, so to make sure. We do have a separate bank account for these funds as well, so we can track the balances down at any point. But I wanted to financially show that that's coming in and that's budgeted to go out as well. There's not really a lot of other changes in there. You will see a lot of reductions in budgeted revenue from prior years. The explanation on a lot of those is COVID-related. We have not done water shut-offs during this time. We also have not late paid penalties on utility bills during this time. That was a good chunk of revenue that we had for turn-on fees and late fees, but we haven't done that. We don't anticipate. We'll probably be talking about bringing that back maybe in September, September 1st. We have to figure out still what impact this is having on people and when the right time to do that is, and also give enough lead time to individuals to set up payment plans if they need to approach the finance department. But that's the reduction in revenues. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of major changes in that fund. Debt service fund, on page six, Fund 50, that's just an accounting tracking of bond payments that we have to do. So the general fund transfers funds out to the debt service fund, makes principal and interest payments for the year on outstanding bonds. Capital projects fund, again, you're, an accounting requirement to track capital projects as a separate fund. The general fund transfers over to that fund to make all lease payments from leases that we have for capital projects. And then we also budgeted some general capital improvements that we do for city facilities on an annual basis to start accumulating a fund balance in there. Waste collection fund, that's just the garbage fund, for lack of a better term. That's, we collect, well, we did have a huge deficit in this fund probably four or five years ago, upwards of $5 million. We increased the garbage rate at that point to start digging ourselves out of that hole. We're at about $200,000 deficit at this point, but you can see now that the waste collection fees and the cost to advance have caught up with us. We're showing about $11,000 net loss for the year. It's basically a wash in the fund, but we're still slightly in the hole. We've only got about $800,000, made up about $800,000 in that deficit. It may be something we have to talk about going forward, not as part of this budget. I recommend that we keep things the same for this fiscal year and ride it out, but we might need to, to get us out of that in the next three or five years. We might have to do a dollar a month increase in the water rate, or waste, the garbage rate. We haven't changed that in four or five years, but that's a different discussion for a different time. That doesn't affect this budget. Page eight, liability insurance fund. Again, like so, like street bridge, fire and rescue. We levy a property tax to cover basically all our non-healthcare-related insurance costs. So that's just an in and an out. That gets transferred to the general fund to cover all premiums that go with that. Local, the next two funds, local law enforcement and drug traffic prevention fund. We get revenue from the county, from forfeitures, from statutory fees and fines that they have in place that we can then use to basically law enforcement efforts. So we track those separately. The local law enforcement fund, we transfer what we can there to help pay for squad car leases. And then drug traffic prevention fund, we do have some lease payments there, but also a portion of the Starcom radios comes out of there, some ammunition to relieve general fund expenses, things of that nature. So not a ton of activity there, but we are required to track that separately. The very bottom, that goes into page nine, you have the industrial development fund. That's a separate fund because years ago, these are the cowhide fees. We get a host fee from the peaker plants that are out, out by Trump Park. $444,000 a year is what we're anticipating for this year. It was tracked separately in the past, however, because that was pledged revenue against a bond issue that has been paid off. We could probably collapse down. I might do that for next year and just make it part of the general fund. Because now that the bonds are paid off and everything's been released on those, it just, that will, it's transferred over to the general fund for operations. The last one is the hotel motel tax fund. We get a hotel motel tax. We can't use that for general operations, things of that nature, only for things related to promotion and tourism in the area. In the past, we have done that to contract the chamber for special events, as well as implement a grant program for encouraging events to come to the area. Unfortunately, we've been double-lamied in this this year because of COVID. Hotels have been closed for a significant period of time. States are very much down. You can see that I budgeted 35,000 compared to 180,000 from prior years. Additionally, events because of COVID restrictions are being basically stripped away. So we don't have a financial revenue coming in to continue those programs and events, so I didn't budget for those in here as well. We do have a fund balance in there, however. If something was to come up, and if we thought of a great event, if restrictions were released, if something came up, we could adopt a budget method at a later point to authorize expenditures out there. And that's real fast and a lot of talk, but thanks to all the, all the other funds of the city. And I'd be happy to address any questions you may have. If there are, I would recommend adopting any of those.
Commissioners, any questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, what do you want to call these?
Other cities?
City funds for budget for fiscal year May 1, 2020, April 30, 2021.
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 9B, tabulation of bids, 2020 alley road program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. On April 14th, 2020, the city elevated a bid on the 2020 alley road program. The cash start of the bid results. Staff request and recommend awarding the project to the lowest responsible bidder, paying in the amount of $661,458.90. Funding for the project has been budgeted for through the motor fuel tax fund. Copies of the bid tabs are on file with city clerk and public works. Additionally, I'd like to make a note on this, that we have submitted this project underneath a grant fund, a couple of infrastructure funds. Even though you approve this, if we not approve for that fund, it would come out of the MSP fund. If approved, it's 100% funded if we get approved for that. We won't know anything on that until the process. But contractionally through the bid, we needed to go forward with awarding this project.
I'll make the motion that we approve the 2020 alley road program. All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the twenty twenty Alley Road Program as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments from commissioners? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye.
Item number nine C, consider approval of adding lateral higher language to the memo of understanding between IAFF Local nineteen ninety-nine and the City of Zion per Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the Union, back in May of this year, the Board Police and Fire Commission approved a lateral transfer rule, for lack of better words, for lateral transfers for fire and police. With that, the Union then has to change their contract to allow the lateral transfer fit in, in a way that would attract lateral transfers. What you have before is a language that they're looking to have placed in the CBA or MOU that's in place right now, where any lateral employee will start at a salary step that matches the seniority at the department they're transferring from, not to exceed the four-year anniversary. They will receive the same amount of vacation days as the step that matches seniority at the department they're transferring from, not to exceed five years, but their seniority with the city will begin at zero on date of hire. So a quick, respectfully request, the council approved the above mentioned line of address.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Item number nine D, consider approval of purchase of two sessions of training in the Police Department per Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you have before you a memo, excuse me, which I'm requesting the purchase of two sessions of training for the entire department on de-escalation and smarter policing for changing times. The cost of these two sessions is just under three thousand dollars. Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board, that state law provides, approved training, continuing education training for all sworn officers in the state of Illinois. This is an approved course through them, so state-recognized. Currently, we have a process where we can send officers to this course, but it's one at a time. This course is filled up quite fast, quite rapidly. Everybody's aware of the recent events around the nation, crime for police reform. One of the common topics is de-escalation. We could bring the training instructors into our building on two dates and provide training for our entire department, thus fulfilling that requirement and also going a long way, I think, to increase the confidence, maintain the confidence of the community and our police department. If approved, I would actually transfer the purchase of three thousand dollars' worth of ammunition to the Drug Traffic Prevention Fund, which is a state statute-approved use of that fund, and then purchase this training out of the already-approved ammunition training fund, so it'd have a net effect on budget.
Well, I noticed the budget we approved did that, so. Three thousand, right?
So I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of two sessions for training.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion, questions?
Chief, if I'm not mistaken, you said that that course could be opened up to other personnel within the city?
Yes, and I have a couple of members here of the community advisory committee who want to extend that invitation to them, as well as others, and certainly yourself.
And when will this take place, Chief?
The two dates, I think, are September sixteenth, October second.
Okay. Is it, with the additional people that can attend, is there a cost to that or is that, that's part of the program?
No, no, it's a, it's a flat fee based just per department. And I already checked with instructor and he has no problem with that.
Okay, all right. Additional questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Item number nine E, consider cancellation of Jubilee Days Parade per Administrator Nabel.
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. I referenced COVID when I was talking about our hotel motel tax. As far as Jubilee Days this year, COVID is still in play. We had to make some tough decisions. The Jubilee Days Commission is the commission of the city, as is the Staff of Days Commission and our city events. We did cancel the Staff of Days earlier this year when we were in the heart of all of this. And my recommendation would also be to cancel Jubilee Days event this year. You have some listed reasons here, but it's not going to be anything we had at all back here in inability to maintain proper social distancing along the street for parade and events, inability to monitor proper precautions, sanitation, masks, et cetera. The potential liabilities to the city of holding such an event should the outbreak occur. I think that's obviously a minimal risk because people are responsible for their own safety, their own mask. I'm more concerned about potential perception that there's outbreak to the general safety of the public. I would anticipate attendance would be down for both the attendees not wanting to expose themselves or risk exposure attending the parade, as well as participants in the parade. A lot of the attractions and the performances that we've had in the parade in the past are not responding or are not attending events, bans, gymnast, things of that nature. I worry about lack of sufficient time to properly plan the event. Votes beg, it's kind of run like clockwork, at least from the outside. Someone coming inside might disagree with that. The outside opinion is from parade in prior years, it would have to be handled differently this year, and we are already in July for that. And then, as I mentioned, the financial resources from Hotel Motel Tax to closures to be able to fund the event. So I think just financially and public health and safety, that would be my recommendation. It is a city event, it's up to the council, or based on the recommendation of the commission or takes into consideration to decide how to go forward.
Is there discussion before we make a motion, or do we want to make a, has the commission weighed in?
We do have some representation from the commission here today. Could put you on the spot.
The commission has pretty much come to the conclusion that we needed to cancel the event for several reasons that Mr. Nabel said.
So that, that's going to be the recommendation of the commission? You met, voted on it, and that's the recommendation you're presenting to council? Well, I'm disappointed, but I do understand, and I think that's the reason why we appointed a commission to discuss this. And I, although, like I said, I'm disappointed that we're not having a parade and events. If that's the recommendation of the commission, then I would abide by it. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we should cancel Jubilee Days Parade this year. It's unfortunate. I've often, I've taken to calling this the lost year. We're going, we're missing a lot of things. And hopefully, next year, they'll come back and everybody will be re-energized for it because they'll have missed it. So they'll be, hopefully, next time, if we're able to do it, it'll be a fantastic turnout. That would be the motion, yes.
As long as we're discussing it. Is this your, like, fortieth year, Rich? Head of the Jubilee Days Commission?
I think it would have been like thirty-third.
Thirty-third, yeah. Coming back for thirty-four?
I already put him on the spot.
Saying taking the fifth on that.
Because you've got two years to plan it now, so it's a big fantastic. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrisont?
Aye.
Mayor McKee?
Aye. Item number ten, departmental commentary. We have UN Resources Director Karen Graves. All right. Director Iason from the Building Department?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to announce this year, the Zion cleanup days is Saturday, August eighth, between eight noon. Could be slightly different this year. We're not going to have anybody out in the community picking up the cleanup for this tonight. Dumpster is on site in twenty-eight, I think, all these sites. Basically drop-off tires and trucks.
And that will start being advertised when?
I believe it's already in the media page.
Okay.
But that's why I'm also announcing it tonight, just to get it out there.
Okay. And then what, what time will that event run?
Eight to noon. Because I could also add, I want to thank Commissioner McDowell, Pride Community Church in the main, and who will appear there next week, assisted in cleaning up some properties and some welcome signs, and they did a great job, so thank you.
Yeah, Director Iason, just real quick, I know that I've received a lot of calls during the pandemic that we're, we're still right in the midst of. And a lot of people were wondering about what was going on with our, our lawn clearing service. And had to tell a lot of people that because of the COVID, it's shut down a lot of operations, and we couldn't even fill enough people for the, from a safety standpoint, to be able to go out and mow the yards, the vacant lots that are available. And now that's been back in swing for a couple of weeks.
Yes, we've backed more, pulled forests, and we're starting to make some progress. So I think we're starting to notice a difference.
Yeah.
Throughout the neighborhood, so we're going to call it a little bit.
Yeah, we've got four, four young men that are working on that crew, and they, they've been doing an outstanding job. And just being in the office and having an opportunity to talk with them on a regular basis, they, they take a lot of pride in their work in, in helping our city look better. So I've thanked them enough, I know you have, and it's good to have them back doing the work that they do for, for our city. Administrator Nabel, or you've had enough to say?
Have you heard enough?
No.
One, one comment. At the last meeting, we did approve a incentive contest, for lack of a better term, for the census. We have a flyer drafted up, we're reviewing it. We will be publishing that out very shortly. We're going to try and get word out wherever we can, on Facebook, in water bills, on our website, word of mouth, however we can get it out, but we're going to try and get it in the happenings. But the, the basis of it is, if you complete the census and you get us proof that you completed the census, you will be entered into a monthly drawing. The first drawing will be at the end of July. There'll be four drawings. You can win three hundred, first place, two hundred, second place, or one hundred, third place. Basically, it's a cash gift card. So the earlier you complete it, the more opportunities you have to draw. Because if you didn't win in July, you'll roll over to the following months. So we encourage everyone to get that census done. Make sure that you're, you have representation, legislators, funding, all look at that and decide how much they want to pay attention to us based on the numbers we have. So it makes a big impact on the future direction of the community to have that done. So I encourage that. Even without the incentive, it's important to be done, but the chance to.
Absolutely, Administrator Nabel. The federal government provides about six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars in funding to communities. So they have to have accurate data from every community to see if you qualify for it. And if we qualify, those things go in terms of helping our healthcare, our school system. They improve public transportation for our residents that need to get to different places throughout the county to work. And also, they're good for home improvements, home repair. So it's crucial, I know there's been a big push from a lot of the different taxing bodies here in the city to make sure that you get your, the census. And I hear this comment, or read comments, a lot about money coming into our city. We deserve that money, but the only way we're going to get that money is if we're stand-up and become counted as part of the census so that we have enough people and the data for the federal government to make sure we get that, those funds. That's money on the table that, that we leave if we don't participate. So stand up and participate. It's crucially important for the well-being of our community. Director Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple announcements. I have contacted our contractor for our matching program. He is anticipating a schedule of starting that in about two weeks, so closer to the end of July. I've also contacted IDOP several times with the one seventy-three project. It's put on hold, I bet. But I then went and contacted a contractor that was one that did for that. He is anticipating a start date for one seventy-three project mid-August. And council has approved our project, anticipating that project to start mid, over toward the end of August. So within the next month, it will be a whole lot of construction on road.
It will be a minor inconvenience, but a major improvement. And if I'm correct, Director Roberts, that area is for, for the one seventy-three project is from Sheridan Road to Green Bay Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a three-mile stretch.
Three-mile stretch, and that's about how much?
I want to say that was a two-million-dollar project.
So, of course, being in Zion, and you hear this with a lot of municipality surrounding us about the road conditions, we have been active, our council, our Director of Public Works, myself have been actively trying to get funds in here to get our roads repaired. And Commissioner Fisher has talked for the last couple of years about the importance of infrastructure that allows us to go to work, allows our first responders to get to place. So we are working on that fast and furious as we can. We've also made some applications to the state for capital funding, which we're, we think that we have some very positive results to provide at some time in the very near future. Future, excuse me, but the capital funding is something that comes along every five years. And we got in early on that and submitted a big list of projects to the state government. And we've had some of our state reps, State Rep Joyce Mason and Senator Melinda Bush, who have done a terrific job of, of pushing that legislation to make sure that we get the capital funding. I've spent a couple of days in Springfield talking to the appropriate people to make sure how important it is for our community to get the funds that we need to improve our roadway. So we're working at it, it's a slow process. But as they say, I guess Frederick Douglass says, without struggles, there can't be progress. And we're, we're making progress, although probably not fast enough for us, or certainly I know our residents in talking to them. Director Roberts, the, the twenty twenty The Road Improvement Project, can you give us an idea of where our residents can go online to see the areas that will be impacted?
We're going to post that list on the city website. It'll show the map and a list of the blocks. There's ten, ten blocks and two valleys that are going to be prepared for this project.
Okay.
So that'll be posted on the city website.
All right. Thank you, Director Roberts. Chief Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Three things. First of all, my personal mood is good to be back. I missed a couple of council meetings for some shoulder surgery, planning out of the sling. It's good to see all these new interfaces in the council and the citizenry here as well. Second thing, just wanted to let the community know that either Commissioner Farrisont or I have been idle in these turbulent times with law enforcement. We've been conducting a self-assessment of the Zion Police Department in terms of the common aspects in terms of police reform. We stacked up very favorably, already did, compared to a lot of things on the national level. It's really surprising to see so many large departments that have failed to do things that departments our size have been doing for twenty-five, thirty years. But we continue to do that. So I, I just didn't want anybody to think that there's nothing being done here on that. We are taking a look at that. The final thing would be, I know I'm preaching to the choir in terms of the council, but our priorities are to reduce violent crime here in Zion and increase violent crime arrests. I know constantly the surveys talk about, go back and forth between the priorities for citizens, either education or safety. And sometimes they flip-flop. We're well aware that that's a huge concern of our citizens. We reoriented ourself and our vision towards that. We finally completed fulfilling our staffing, positioning people a little bit more aggressively to address specifically violent crime. But we have got to do something about our, our relationship with our landlords. Had a couple of situations this last month where one landlord didn't want to do anything about a shooting, didn't care, wasn't going to take any action. Another one that showed the opposite end of that equation and is going to hold the tenants responsible for something that happened as a result of their responsible actions. They, they both. They, they both choose to do that because they're at will to do that. Because we don't have anything, any kind of mandate that makes them adopt a crime-free housing ordinance or stipulation for their lease. I know we've tried to get the home rule, both through voter action, hopefully it will be achieved through census. For those of you who don't know, it requires us to be over twenty-five thousand in population. We missed it by less than six hundred in two thousand and ten. But that's a missing piece of our efforts to address, uh, public safety here. The ability to hold people accountable for environment act if they commit somewhere else in town and hold them accountable where they live. And that, uh, certainly sober's people about, uh, acting stupid and irresponsible in the community, so. So we continue to strive and drive towards that.
Yeah, uh, Chief Henderson, you know, we had the landlord meetings prior, that were going relatively well prior to, uh, the change in all of our lives with the quarantine and the COVID pandemic. And I had no talking to some of the members at City Hall today or within the last week that we're going to start holding those again via Zoom. As we will with our, uh, we had our, our meetings with our citizens, uh, panel, we're going to start those things up again by Zoom. So that we can, can continue to get input from our residents about their concerns within the community. So many things have been put on hold and that, the landlord program was working well because we were getting a lot of cooperation and participation, uh, from the different landlords and coming and seeing that. We want to work with them, with the cities, we don't want to have an adversarial relationship. But we do believe it's important for our tenants to live in safe, clean environments. So we're going to continue, we're going to start those things up probably in August, as we talk to the different entities that have hosted those events. And we'll make sure that that gets out on all of the, uh, social media pages that we have a presence on. Chief Lewis?
Thank you, Your Honor, a couple things. Number one, we mentioned this at the last meeting, but I want to bring it up again, the Blackboard Connect. I urge everyone who hasn't to go on to the city's website and sign up on the resident portal for Blackboard, or urge your friends and your neighbors. Last time I checked, it was this morning, we have three hundred, less than three hundred cell phones and emails actually registered on this site. Pretty sure we have more than three hundred residents with cell phones in the city of Zion. And the first thing that's going to fail is communications, we always hear that, I didn't hear it, nobody said anything. Takes less than two minutes to go on the city website, there's detailed instructions how to do it. You can get registered, you can put up the, I think it's ten cell phones on there, three different emails, in addition to your home phone if you still have a landline. So, take a minute, look at the website, click on the link and it'll be all set.
Yeah, Chief, one of the questions that I think came up earlier about this was, when you went to the site, uh, there was a notice to download the app.
Yeah, if you're trying to log in from your phone, so if you've got an Android phone and you go on there and you click the link through the city website, it wants to push you to the Google Play Store. There is no Android app for the Google Play Store and Blackboard knows that, and they're working to fix that. And I even tried it yet through my phone to see if it does that. But if you go to the website, I put detailed instructions on there, how to log into the portal from a mobile phone, through a browser, a mobile phone through an app, a desktop browser, or a desktop unit through a browser and a desktop unit through the city website. So there's four different options to sign up, and it's just detailed, you can read the instructions, you can get it done. But you have to take the time to do it, and for whatever reason, we're not being a big push for everybody to sign in. So I think we'll do something in that utility building some more, you know, sometimes you just gotta hit people that little push to, let's do it. You know, but once that's up and running, I think we'll be able to get messages out quite quickly when the need be.
Yeah, and we'll continue to push that through our different social media sites too. I mean, I signed up for it right away and it was, uh, relatively easy. And, uh, we just, it's an emergency system that, uh, when we had the last water boil order. It's the first time in maybe a decade or more that we've had, uh, an entire citywide water boil order.
It's never happened in my time.
And that's been, how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years. And so we are trying to make sure that our citizens get the information, the vital information that they need when there's an emergency in town, such as that or other emergencies too. So again, it's like the census, uh, please take the time, uh, to sign up. So that, uh, when there are things happening in the city, especially of a security nature or otherwise, that you're, you're informed.
The one error I've noticed, a lot of people are calling saying they can't get through. Like a lot of websites, you click the sign me up, you put in your data, and then it wants to send you a confirmation email. Well, that's kind of in small print where it says a link will be sent to your email, click on that to register. People are forgetting to go to their email and click that link to finish it out, so you gotta do two steps.
And sometimes that, that link you'll find will go to your spam folder. So you have to, if it doesn't come to your email right away, be sure to look in your fat spam folder for that, that link in the email from Blackboard.
So the second quick item I had, you may know this, we've had two rather large fires on the east side of town over the last month. Caused quite a bit of smoke, traveled quite a distance. The one thing I urge people, if you're going to come out and watch, and you're welcome to watch, take your pictures from across the street and out of the way. At each fire, we had a few people that were super curious and kind of wanted to circumvent their way up super close to get that front page newspaper picture, I guess. There's a lot of activity happening on those fire seas, a lot of water being sprayed, sometimes under heavy pressure, there's poses trip hazards. Stay across the curb, get the best picture you can, but try not to wander where the action is, it's not often the safest place, so that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Uh, any of our commissioners have any, uh, commentary?
I just wanted to, to piggyback on what Director Ironson said about the Many Hands Project. So we typically, um, have about a hundred young people from multiple churches in our area come together and work on projects. Mainly residential projects, homeowners that have trouble getting their lawns mowed, or alleys cleared, or, uh, painting and, and light carpentry work and those types of things. This year, we had to scale way back, and in fact, it was just, uh, one church, uh, Christ Community Church, that, um, had two teams that, uh, worked at five homes in the community. And then we also took on some city projects, the, uh, the old bus TiVo on twenty-seven seventy-one Galilee. If you drive by there, you can actually see the building, uh, cleaned away a lot of the, the brush and the trees that were, uh, around there. And then the, uh, the Dunes Theater property and, and behind it, um, uh, we, we mowed that and actually we cut up some trees there. Hope that's okay, Rich? And, you know, and, and hauled that stuff away. So, um, the, the kids did a great job in working on all those projects. And the second thing I just want to mention is, uh, on the Fourth of July, um, the Zion Administrative Association sponsored a prayer walk and concert. And so we had just under three hundred people on the walk. Uh, we went to Central Middle School and prayed for the students and teachers and families that are represented in our school district. Then we came to the police station and prayed for those in authority in our city, including the council. And we're grateful that, uh, State's Attorney Mike Nearheim also attended the event and, uh, and was there. We prayed for our police officers and then we went, uh, last stop was the library and, um, we prayed for racial reconciliation in the city. And then came back to the campus of Christ Community Church, uh, for a, a really great concert. So, um, it was a good event, um, encouraging to, uh, those that came. And, um, I'm hopeful that the prayers that were uttered on that walk, um, will reap, uh, reward in the city.
Not only in our city, but throughout our nation.
Yeah.
You know, we, we are in a place where there's a lot of healing and conversations that need to take place. And open conversations, uh, that have been pointed out over the years. So we need all the prayers that we can get, not only locally, but nationally and worldwide with everything that's happening. Commissioner Fisher?
I was just going to mention that, uh, as we open this new phase of, um, Restore Illinois, as we're reopening businesses slowly. Uh, I would encourage people to patronize our local restaurants, either through outdoor dining or limited indoor dining. We still want to encourage everyone, when you're in store, wear a mask. It doesn't take any time at all, put it on, and then you can take it off when you get to your car. If we hold true to keeping these protections in place for the next few months, hopefully, maybe less than that, I think it will be to our benefit. And we see the results of, let's say, rushing to reopen and the impact that's having on other states, which is unfortunate. So, uh, please, wear a mask, social distance, uh, wash your hands.
Yeah, and, and be patient, this is, uh.
We're in the long haul.
We, yeah, we would like this to be over yesterday, or two weeks ago, uh, but it's not. And I have to commend our, our legislators, uh, in the state of Illinois for doing what they have felt is in the best interest of all of our citizens. As Commissioner Fisher mentioned, uh, there are so many states now that are starting to close again because they didn't heed the warnings initially. Uh, Chicago recently, and I sent this out on a Facebook page, now requires people coming in from certain states, uh, to quarantine for fourteen days. I think Alabama, Texas, Utah, Florida, uh, I'll repost that again, to quarantine for fourteen days. Because those are the states that are getting hit the hardest, that did not, uh, take the measures, uh, with the caution that needed to be taken. And everyone has their own opinion of what should be done or how it should be done. But if you just look at the numbers of the cases and how many people have died, more people have died from this coronavirus than they did during the Vietnam War. That's pretty substantial. So, uh, uh, thank our Zion citizens, the, the people that are wearing the mask and practicing social distancing. Thank you, and let's continue to try to have patience, as Pastor Langley talked about, as we continue to get through this together and, and forge and, and work on the new way that we have to live right now. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Fireston?
Yep, uh, just wanted to touch on, uh, the work that the chief and I, uh, I have been working on. He's been very cooperative and diving into that self-assessment they talk about. There's been a lot of, a big push nationally, I guess, for some of the, like, the, the high-level reforms within police. We are trying to take it a step further and look at specific scenarios, uh, really take a deep dive into our policies and push that throughout the whole culture from the department. Again, after the initial assessment, we do stack up very well, but that still doesn't mean that we don't have work to do. And so we've been working really hard to go through that. So I appreciate all the effort and dedication that he's put into that initial review. The expectation, uh, from myself and the conversations I've had with the mayor, um, we want to be more transparent with the community. We know that there's a lot of trust that is broken and needs to be rebuilt, um, when it comes to policing. And so again, the first look was in-house, seeing what things we need to clean up, and then we want to get out into the community and get more feedback. The Citizens Advisory Board is going to be one source of that, uh, but that's just one source, uh, we also want to get into the community. We just had a situation yesterday, um, it didn't involve, uh, our Zion Police Department, but it is all, involved other officers within the city. And the thing that was so disheartening about it is just the contact being made, um, had young individuals feeling like they were a crime. They felt as if they were doing something wrong and were in trouble. And that's not the type of confidence and, and just value that we want to instill in our young people, right? So, um, they were out there, you know, working, doing something that was completely above board, um, and they shouldn't feel intimidated, right? And although the officer was respectful, um, just in light of the history of, you know, America in recent times, um, it was still a traumatic event. And so those are the sort of things that we want to work on within our department and within our community, so, thank you.
Thank you for reaching out to that group too, Commissioner Fireston. I, I think one of the things that's been a benefit, one of the benefits that I've seen, uh, during this pandemic is that it's given each of us a, a, a lot more time to be able to address residents and their concerns that they, they call us. They call us about fireworks, they call us about incidents that have happened at, uh, an apartment building here, uh, separate from the incidents, uh, that have transpired, uh, last weekend. But we're taking this opportunity as a city, uh, of course, as you see all over the world, not only as their mistrust, uh, with the police department, but also in government. And one of the things that we've all said is that we are, we're very transparent about what we're doing here in Zion. If someone has an issue with something that we're doing, one of the things that we've all encouraged, uh, the chiefs, uh, everyone here is, call us. We're all available to sit and talk. It's, it's easy to criticize on Facebook when you don't have all of the facts. And each and every one of us, I know sitting here, sitting in our department, uh, Director Ironson, there was an issue I called you about today that was a housing issue with a landlord. It got resolved right away. The building department took care of it, a resident called me about it, uh, there had been some laps in communication, and it got resolved. So we are listening and we are taking action. And a lot of times, the actions that we take may seem small, but they're part of rebuilding the foundation of the city that we need to have intact for us to move forward. So thank you for the, uh, uh, for lack of it, sometimes the criticism, sometimes the complaints, but know that they're not going, uh, they're not falling on deaf ears. Uh, the one thing that I want to mention as we move forward on this is, uh, Commissioner McDowell mentioned the twenty-seven seventy-one Galilee building. And I've been working, uh, since being, uh, elected as mayor, I've been working on one of the county commissions. And that building will, is being scheduled, we're going to get some money from the county at some point, uh, within the next year or so to be able to demolish that building. It's been an eyesore for almost four decades. And one of the things that sometimes people don't understand about what a mayor does, a lot of it is behind the scenes. And it's being, having a seat at the table where decisions are being made about what money is being put into our community. Either with, for our police department, our building department, our public works department, uh, we are, have a seat at the table now, we have a voice. And we have state representation that they are addressing the issues that we have here in Zion. Because we sit down weekly, Dave, uh, Nabel and myself, our city attorney, our department heads, and we talk about the issues that are in front of us. And we make sure that we get all of the information out that's necessary. I was on a Zoom call about two weeks ago and they were talking about, uh, there were a lot of elected officials on the call. And one of the best things I heard on that call, uh, not looking for a pat on the back, was the Lake County Chair commented on the letter that the city of Zion had sent the county board about money needed for our community. And at that point, no other community in Lake County had sent that letter. And it was a letter that we had also sent to Congress about funding for our community, the CARES Act, the Stranded Act, trying to get the Stranded Act, uh, as part of the, uh, CARES Act. So we've been very active behind the scenes in making sure that our voices are heard. And it's sort of like, uh, you know, some, there's an old African proverb where you don't think one mosquito is a problem until you turn off your light and he's in the room with you. So that's the approach we've been kind of, uh, taking and talking to, uh, the people that can impact change in our community. And it comes from us, but it also comes from our citizens too. With that, uh, I think that's probably all I have for citizens' comments or departmental commentary. The next item on the agenda is announcements on July twenty-first. Six fifteen, we have the Zion Township Board Meeting, and at seven PM, we have a Zion City Council Meeting where we will be talking about one of the issues that has plagued our communities over the last month and a half, illegal fireworks. On August fourth, uh, there will be a, a seven o'clock city council meeting. And again, uh, Director Ironson talked about, on August eighth, we will be sending out more information about Zion's Cleanup Day where you can bring electronics, tires, and everything to the twenty-seven seventy-one Galilee building, so we can continue to keep our community, uh, looking good. Item number twelve.
My order, sir. I'd leave Commissioner Fisher to check on it, or I'd leave the annual township meeting. annual township meeting will be at six o'clock on the twenty-first.
That is correct, on the twenty-first. Actually, the township meeting, six fifteen, is it?
Well, no, the the board meeting is at six fifteen. I believe the annual town meeting has been moved to the twenty-first. Yeah, the clerk confirms that. Yes, thank you, Mr. Bremner, for reminding us.
Thank you. And so could you repeat that, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, on July twenty-first, there will be a six o'clock meeting. That'll be the annual town meeting for the electors of the township, which means the voters can come to the meeting and, um, pass various motions related to the township.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Bremner. Uh, item number twelve now is a closed session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two, open meetings for the discussion of personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session and pending litigation? Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And because of social distancing, uh, we're going to have, ask everyone to leave because we use this area as our, uh, closed session meeting room. So thank you for coming and, uh, participating.